Well, thank you for this great privilege.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Dear Father, as we embark on a new year, we pray your blessings not only on this city council, Lord, but on the entire community of Perry. We thank you, God, for what this community represents. And we pray, God, that you would undertake to watch over this entire community, Lord, in this new year. Thank you for this city council, Lord. We ask that they would do what is intended, Lord, and they would have the wisdom and the vision, Lord, to move forward in this new year. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you up and about after your surgery. You doing well with that?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
I'm going back to the surgeon tomorrow.
Oh, are you?
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, good luck with that. Doesn't make you want to run right out if you need a joint replacement. It seems like everybody I've talked to that's had a joint replacement, they are still trying, working through it, trying to make it better. I thought they'd get better at that stuff. I don't know.
Perry.
Hi, Ken.
Hi, Sue.
That's Perry. Isn't that nice? Ever do that on yours, too? No. Please use my hand.
Sorry for covering.
Has to be into.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
All I've seen was you looked in down. Sorry. Turned down.
Oh, okay. Am I addressing anybody today? Anybody signed up?
Yeah.
I was waiting for a text message from you.
Hmm?
I was waiting for a text message from you.
Looking for one or waiting for one?
Waiting for one. You're like, I'm here, where are you at?
I was just getting ready to send you one when you called. Locating you in my contacts. It is 7:00 PM. I call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you take roll up, please?
McConnell. Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Gallobeath here. Terry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Soehanen.
Here.
Collins, Confort, except Constance Lumber, Mike Powell.
And he did tell me at our last meeting, when we saw him, that he would not be here tonight because of coaching. I'm looking now for approval of agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as permitted.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the December 15, 2022 regular meeting. Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't know of any pre-approved reports or presentations for tonight, but I did get a phone call from Tom Emery, our new county commissioner. He was just trying to figure out if he could fit in coming tonight to give a report in between the other meetings that he had. So I talked to him and encouraged him just to come next time. So he will come on the January 15 meeting to give us his first report. I told him we would be excited to hear one. We now come to the place on our agenda for public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council for a public comment? No one? Okay, then we'll move to communications. Devin, do we have any?
Nothing for tonight.
No communications for tonight. In regard to my reports, I'll just indicate once again that we still are looking for someone to represent the city in the I-69 trade corridor group. This group meets every other month, and their first meeting is February 14. Megan is our backup person for that. The meetings do take place at 9:00 AM at the Bishop International Airport, because this group covers all the way from Port Huron to us and actually goes on beyond to the Capital City Airport. There are no municipalities over that way that purchase paint. But there is a nice description of what this group does on our website. So if you have any interest at all, just go to the city website and read that through. And if you're interested in that, there's an application you can fill out or just give me a call. I'll also say that we did get a communication from the state treasury telling us what a good job our treasurer is doing. Here it is. From the Department of Treasury, we have an approval for the qualifying statement for the city of Perry. This has to be submitted regularly. And Megan did that as she was supposed to, and they said she did a great job. We're all set. So good job, Megan. Thank you. She does a great job. All our people do. We're very fortunate to have the people on staff that we... That being said, we'll move into our department head reports. Who wants to go first? Kevin?
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Back, Kevin.
Just got a few things to go over. It was kind of a busy month, but not too crazy. Just wanted some noteworthy topics. The Christmas fantasy, the guys put a lot of work into that. Everything seemed to go really well. Got a lot of compliments, and everything looked good. And all that were involved, we're happy with the turnout and the event in a whole. So to those of you there involved in that, thank you. Congratulations. It was a good group effort. We did some inspections of manholes throughout town, all of our sanitary sewer manholes and some storm manholes. We were looking for failure and infiltration of water that isn't supposed to be there. We documented the manholes that are declining or need work so that we can address those in the future. The Well Four project that was completed in December, late November, early December. It's working as it should. It needed some minor tweaking with the controls, but it's doing its job. Everything's going well. Pretty happy with how that project turned out, how it's working. Weekly, we do, we check manholes for any kind of blockage, backup, that type of stuff. We found a few issues throughout the system, which required some sewer maintenance jetting. So we take the bag truck out, clear those lines, keep everything flowing. We catch a lot of issues before there are issues for residents. So wanted to mention that, that that's something that happens regularly. That is a good program that we do here in Perry, which is pretty uncommon among departments. Preventative maintenance is big for our department, and it shows. I think we do a pretty good job on that type of stuff. Beyond that, you know, with Christmas and New Year's was a little hectic. Had the big snowstorm that moved in. Our guys worked around the clock. Holidays, it didn't matter. We got in, come in, cleared the snow, kept the roads safe, did a good job. The snow drifting was a full-time job. We were clearing every morning, pushing the drifts back, making sure everything got salted and cleared and the roads were passable. And then the weather warmed up, and we thought we were going to be sliding through into the new year. And we had back-to-back water main breaks on Friday and Saturday, which would be New Year's Eve. The one down here at Keene Street was pretty significant. Took us six hours to clear that one up, get it all backfilled, packed down, back in service. Had to do some line flushing with that, make sure everybody had good, clean water. I'm sure if we didn't, the mayor would have told us by now.
I would have let you know. I called Kevin and said, I know it's 7:00 in the morning, but my water's not good. He said, we got it, Mayor. Just look out your window, we got it. So I looked out my window, and they were already working on it.
Literally across the street.
Exactly.
So we think that the sudden cold and the sudden warm-up kind of got the ground moving, which caused or aided in the cause of the water main breaks. It's not due to lack of maintenance or any issues there. It just happened. So we got that one fixed up. Like I said, it took us six hours. We had to have a company come in and bust the asphalt up for us, so there's a little cost there that's out of the norm. But they were really helpful with clearing the asphalt, and they used their equipment to help us backfill, compact, and do everything. And then we had one at Little Court, which is cul-de-sac in the Oaks subdivision. That one was small. It, that one only took us about four hours to do that one on Saturday, so that one wasn't a big deal. But the guys all responded, showed up, worked till the job was done, got it done, buttoned up, and back in service and back home. So the performance from the department is the best I've seen. I think everybody does a good job. I can't take all the credit for that. All I do is ask, and they perform. So I just wanted to give those guys a kudos for working whenever duty calls. So is there anybody, any questions from anybody? Those were pretty much the highlights of the month for me. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin. They did do a great job. I just got my cup of coffee and sat in my living room and watched them out the door. They weren't like, they just know what each other want. I mean, they didn't even talk. They just were doing their thing. They did a great job. Megan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a couple highlights for you tonight as far as tax collection goes for summer and winter. Residents have until February 14 to pay their winter taxes here at City Hall with no penalty. We can still collect taxes until February 28 with a small penalty fee once they are late. Summer taxes are 96% collected at this time, and winter taxes are at 60%, so things are going well there. One other reminder is that residents should purchase their dog licenses for 2023. You can do that here at City Hall until February 28. And that's a message for all Chiawassee County residents. You don't have to be a resident of the city of Perry to purchase your Chiawassee County dog tag here at City Hall. After February 28, there is a price increase, and you will have to go to the county courthouse to get your dog tags. That is all I have tonight. It was a pretty busy month in December, which you all heard just a couple weeks ago. Waiting on results from the grant application. They said by the end of January is when they're going to determine their recipients. So we're going to move forward after that.
Hope and pray.
Fingers crossed on that.
Any questions?
Very good.
Thank you.
I hope you got anything for us.
Not personally. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I told the mayor earlier, I really don't have much of a report, but I did want to pass on. I was off with the family between the holidays, and I came back on Tuesday, Wednesday, sorry. Came back Wednesday to an email, somebody looking for a law enforcement job. Former graduate from Wasso, military, law enforcement experience. So that encouraged me, kind of made my week. So haven't seen that in over a year, so it's kind of nice to see. So I sit down with him next Monday, and we'll talk. Other than that, I don't have anything, but if you folks have anything for me, could answer any questions?
Anybody?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was one other thing I meant to mention and didn't, so let me just do that right now. We did have an application through our grant writer, James Hissong, for a $130,000 grant for security slash generators. And that was submitted to Representative Molinar's office. It's a legislative earmark grant, and we got it.
Oh, good.
But we still have to apply for it. They earmarked it for us, $130,000. So James is investigating where the application is and how we get that, and he will fill that out with our help, of course, then get that submitted, and then we can be more secure. So that was exciting. So now we'll move into committee reports.
Just a couple of things from the ordinance committee. Our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, the 26th of this month at 10:00 AM here in Council Chambers. And we'll continue our work on cleaning up and reviewing a few specific ordinances that we're having processed. And we'll report that we had talked previously about some revisions that we had submitted to our city attorney for his review, specifically four different ordinances. Those have just come back in the last couple days with his seal of approval. So we will start probably at our next meeting, doing a first reading on a couple of those. We won't try to do all of them at once, but over the next couple meetings, we'll do our initial first readings and hopefully get those approved.
Could I just add a word to that? He said that our ordinance committee was doing outstanding work. So he doesn't just let things out like that very often. So he's been impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
That's all.
Any other committees want to report? We'll move then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move to approve the bills as presented and the pavement be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any old business, and under new business, it says mayor's appointments. And that was only if I did find somebody to fill in, to take the representation of the I-69 corridor. And I have not had anybody contact me about doing that. If any of you think of, I think it would be important to have a business person, perhaps that owns a business here on that group, although it's not necessary. But if you would kind of give thought to that, too, and let me know if you think of anybody, I would appreciate that. So we can move now into possible approval of credit card resolution.
You received the resolution tonight, so it was not in your original packet. And Megan can explain the reason why it is in front of you and her need to have this.
So this is a follow-up to the credit card authorization policy that we approved a couple months ago, so that we could get corporate cards from Huntington Bank. This is just a process that Huntington Bank requires. It's you authorizing me to sign the agreement that our policy allows for. And the three cardholders will be the city treasurer, the chief of police, and the city superintendent of Department of Public Works. So this is just a formality that Huntington requires this resolution. There was a bit of miscommunication on their end and our end about who was waiting for who to take the next step. So the gentleman I was waiting on just got back from personal leave today. And they agreed that this is the resolution they are looking for, so we can move forward with our corporate cards.
Any questions for Megan about that?
I move that we accept and adopt the credit card resolution as presented, which gives the treasurer authorization to sign said agreement, and also states how many cards will be issued and to whom. Second.
Motion from Steve, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to the topic of a possible approval of proposal for the solar B. Kevin, do you want to talk to us about that?
It seems redundant that I have to come back to you with this proposal, and I've been here before for the same issue. The original proposal was for $5,587.70. They were unable to do the work in that proposal. When they showed up, there was ice on the water, and they couldn't get out to it, they couldn't bring it in. So we opted to wait until spring to do that work. Upon communicating with the company further, they recommended that another unit that's similar in age is probably going to need the same service really soon. So as opposed to waiting till it dies, and then we have to pay the $5,000 all over again, they could loop them both into one service call and do both units for $7,765.70. So I'm asking for this amount to be approved, which is a difference of $2,178. So the previous approval...
So the $5,000 they approved is...
Didn't get spent.
I know that, but it's null and void.
Right.
This is new.
Yes.
Because the way I was explaining is that you need the 12 to do the current one that didn't get done and the new ones.
The $7,765.70 will cover both.
Okay.
In addition to the $5,000 we...
So it's not additional? Because that's what I was explaining on. This is actually, so if you want to do the difference in your motion...
What was the difference?
Because you've already approved the $5,000. You can do the difference in this.
Well, what would be approved, $5,000, what?
$2,178. That's what we approved before, right?
No, that's additional. There you go.
$5,587.70 was what we originally approved back in November. So I apologize for any confusion. I just thought if you wanted to loop the two services together, instead of paying a separate service call, to have them come back out when it fails, because like I said, they're both similar in age, they're almost 20 years old, and it's time to get those up to snuff, so.
How many solar Bs are there, Kevin?
There is five. We have two.
Only one controller?
Yes, only one controller is bad. Each one is a self-contained unit. They are charged by solar power. They have a controller that turns them on and off. And what happened was when that was PM, the seal must have gotten torn, and it got moisture in there, which allowed it to stop working. And that needs to be replaced along with the batteries. And then the other older one, they're just going to do the battery change. The controller's fine on that one. So we're just trying to condense the services. It'll save us money in the long run, and we'll have everything we need to keep the lagoons healthy and flowing and everything we need to do up there.
Each year, it takes two batteries.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I got a little bit lost on the figures. So you're going to do 12 for $7,765.
Yes.
Were you talking about 12,000? You've already approved $5,000. When I asked Kevin, I thought this was an additional $7,000. So I made your motion as you needed the $5,000 yet for the spring and another $7,000. He's reporting to you that the $5,000 should be excluded or subtracted from it? Okay. So there's just an increase for now to do the additional one. So your number in that is incorrect. You're going to want to put the $2,000...
In my notes, and if that was what we disapproved, this is what we're going to pay for the service for all of it, which is a difference of that.
Okay.
So we're asking for that $2,178 more.
Okay. Thank you.
Apologizing for the confusion.
No, no problem.
So in the motion, you can cross out the $7,765.70 and put in $2,178 if that's what you want to do.
I move that we accept the quote from Axon Water Care for an amount not to exceed $2,178 for parts and service to the older solar B units and on my superintendent of DPW to sign the quote acceptance.
Second.
We have a motion from Mindy, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The progress of the light on Second Street. Well, it's not done yet. I contacted Gabe over at Consumers Energy, who's the coordinator for installations such as this. When I had contacted Consumers a couple weeks ago, Gabe was on holiday leave, and so I talked to, or I didn't talk to, but emailed Kristen, who sent me a manboat Morris. And so I called Gabe and said, please call me. So he was back in, we spoke today, and he said, yeah, I see that, that didn't quite go like it should have. So he's re-selling stuff through, making sure that... So he's re-selling stuff through, making sure that they're in Perry. And they'll be in touch with Kevin and I to schedule that installation. He hoped very soon, although he couldn't tell me today exactly when. It will get done. Any questions? Okay, then. Moving on. Any other business that may come before council at this time? I will just let you know also about our lot that we have for sale. It is a vacant lot, approximately a half acre in size. The city is selling. It is on South M52, just on the north side of Mosers. It does not have city utilities. It will need private well and subject to be developed and it would have to be evaluated by Chiwasi County Health Department. But we are offering it for sale for $8,500. If anyone's interested, please contact me at City Hall. I did email and communicate with Jim Rundell, the associate broker at I-69 Development. And they have no interest. It doesn't touch their property as was previously thought. It does not. So they're not interested. And I have not heard anything from anyone other than our initial offer that we had from one of the neighboring properties. But I have talked with him. He's still interested. Any other business? Council discussions? Anyone from the public who'd like to address the council? Agenda items for our next meeting?
County Commissioner report?
Yep, County Commissioner report. That will be Tom Emery.
And I believe, and may incorrect me in the public hearing, will be at the next meeting, correct?
Yep.
And that's all I know from the top of my head until.
You can put mayor's appointments back on there because we will have an appointment for the I-69 corridor.
Okay. Is it okay if I do no action taken too?
Yes.
We'll pick a couple of the ordinances for first reading of the ones we've got back there.
Is it okay if I don't put that in that only because we don't know which ones? I'm pretty ready for you. They're sitting here just waiting.
Anybody else have anything? Well, I think this is a new record. 7:27, meeting adjourned.